On board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We will mark the meeting open at 7:05 PM. With that, we'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. Is there any public comments? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please, Jamie.
Jamie Burnin, 124 Bunge Road, Seymour, Connecticut. I am here tonight to have several concerns, but what I'll address at this time is what's on your agenda. The micro and macro view of item number seven in your tax incentive plan. As Kurt, in your, what seems to be apparent at this time is the fact that in a town tax incentive policy, there is specific procedural requirements as to how this goes forward from picking up an application, moving through. The final step is for this board to look at the recommendations and suggestions that have been set forth. The third step in the process would been to go submit the application to Economic Development Commission. I've gone through the records and spoke with people tonight, and this has never gone before them. On the other side of this, I looked up Thule today, their corporate listing. I think we have to look at this whole tax policy because if we're given, if our only economic development policy is to give away taxes, we're not taking down the root of the problem, which is that taxes are too high to be competitive in Seymour. Or else why would we be giving away taxes to get people to move here? But Thule Group is listed for the 2017 net income of 5.9 billion SEK, which is the Swedish kunyos, whatever, which translates to US dollars of a net income for 2017 of 730.28 million dollars. If we're giving tax incentives to companies worldwide, quote unquote, companies with that kind of income, you know, what about the person in town that's making $30,000 and paying the same mill rate? We really need to look at this tax incentive policy. We need to recreate, this was done in 2012, at least the latest version I could find, as to whether this is kind of a mom and pop or startup thing, or we're looking to subsidize multimillion dollar companies in Seymour. Again, this board in that tax incentive policy has some flexibility as to how much, if the incentive would be given, as to how much depending on, you know, the amount of local labor, annual labor to work there, construction costs, et cetera. But it specifically lays out a procedural requirement that it goes before the Economic Development Commission for review and recommendations prior to coming here. I would have to say the best thing going in Seymour's economic development these days is the fact that we're not paying $44,000 to a director who wasn't giving us any return on our money anyways. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? There are no public comment, we'll move on to item number four, approved minutes for the March 20, 2018 regular meeting.
Someone's.
Second.
Who was that?
I'm sorry.
Emery, motion by Emery, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes 6-0. Item number five, first elections report, the two issues that I would discuss in the first selectmen's report, during my report are actually on the agenda. So we'll skip over that, and we'll go right on to item number six. Warning of bid for town building projects. In your, or actually, Mike, why don't you come up and obviously introduce yourself to the board, and then we'll just kind of go from there.
Sure, my name's Mike Marsnick, I'm chairman of the public building committee, permanent building committee in Seymour. I recently wrote a letter recommending the approval of the contract that was, I mean, the order of the bid that was submitted to us for the town projects, the library, the town hall, and the police station. We had about five bids, lowest being Nozzle Builders at 1.6 million dollars. We had another bid that was fairly close at 1.69 million, and then we had three other bids, one at 1.7, 1.7 million, and two at 1.9 million. We did reference checks on Nozzle Building to confirm they both have the capacity to do the project and that their, the references checked out to the point where we can fairly recommend them without any issues relative to any, any problems at any towns that are in this vicinity or any other state work. They are approved by DAS for up to 25 million dollars in construction. So they are fairly good sized builders. This is probably a job that's in their right wheelhouse, meaning that it's small enough for them to do with their in-house labor. They don't have to sub it out as much as they will. They will still buy all the, all the windows and boilers and all the mechanical units, and they'll still have to hire electricians and plumbers and mechanical contractors. But the windows are probably going to be done by their in-house labor people. And we did do enough reference checks on them to confirm that they can do this job.
Okay. Any questions? All right, so what Mike is referring to is the 1.5 million that was bonded two years ago. They've gone through the process now, they've narrowed down the scopes of work.
Yeah, let me explain from the bond, original bond request that we, that was passed to where we are today. When we did the bond request almost a year ago, and it was to do mostly window replacement and a few other mechanical areas where we had no makeup air into the facility. For instance, this room here under state code is not conducive to a work environment, meaning you don't have enough makeup air coming in, fresh air coming in, and therefore we have to provide that when you do any kind of upgrades. In the process, when we looked at all the equipment and all the things that we had to do, it was more beneficial to the town to go and put in energy efficient boilers that were going to replace these 30 and 40-year-old units that are, you know, very inefficient. So in the process, in that 1.5 million dollar original budget, we didn't have the LED lighting in the library. Originally, we were going to try and replace some things, fix some things. We didn't have a complete replacement of all the LED lighting upstairs. We didn't have condensing boilers here or in the, in the library that were really put in place to create better efficiencies. We did apply to Eversource, and the application is in fact in, in a process. And we thought we'd have some answers by now, but the, but the power outages that Eversource went through in early March created a workflow problem for them. Therefore, we didn't get the paperwork back in time. We did get feedback, initial feedback, that called for rebates in the 20 to 30%, 35% of the total project. That would put that number in between 300 and 500,000 dollars of rebates. And the reason for the rebates are because of the high efficiency equipment that we're putting in place. So while we're over budget on this contract, we're, we're very confident that we're going to get some kind of rebate from Eversource, somewhere in the 200,000 dollar range at a low point. Could be as high as 400,000. We feel very comfortable with 200,000 dollars from our engineering consultants.
So that would put you back within?
Under budget, correct.
100 grand under budget, yeah.
Yeah.
And it could be higher. So the predicament here is how fast, how quickly can we, do we have to make decisions? The Nozzle contract calls for a 180-day completion, very quick, in and out. Most of the other contractors were a year to, to a year and a half. We didn't want to have any situation where windows and there's not movement fast enough and getting people in disruption to staff, disruption to the work environment. So we really liked their approach, but they are, when you get into a schedule that's that tight, you have to do things quickly like ordering materials, windows, lighting, boilers. And when we questioned them whether or not, because we do have a, in the contract, we have a deduct alternate, meaning we can eliminate the lighting, LED lighting, from the library package for a savings of 100,000 dollars. We, we're not there, we're not going to do it yet, but, because we really want to put the LED light fixtures in, to fix the problem. So we're, we've got a couple of weeks to make that decision before we pull back. We may decide that, depending on the price they, they look at it, whether or not we buy the fixtures or delay the labor. And maybe that can be part of a budget item that the town could figure out in the next fiscal year, that we can do something, you know, with that money. But we're very confident that the Eversource rebate, and they, they did put the program back in. The state originally had pulled some of that money back on the rebates. They put the money back in, so they were, they took the applications, we were one of the first applications back in under Eversource. So we're pretty confident that we're going to get that money and be on the budget.
And just to build up that, we also have the proactive building account fund for 100,000 dollars. So if need be, that has nothing targeted for it this year. So worst case scenario, we can use the 100 to go directly towards this project.
Right, and when would they start?
They probably will start within 30 days of the contract signing. Now, you may not see them here for two months. We probably don't want them opening up buildings until sometime in June. Because they still got to order windows, windows usually take eight to 10 weeks lead time. Lighting fixtures, same thing, six to eight weeks, because none of these companies keep these stuff in stock. These are all special order windows. Matter of fact, the upstairs windows are very big, I mean, they are really big. So you'll probably see them doing, hitting us hard, trying to get this thing done during the warm weather for the summer months.
Okay, so the 180 days start from the time that the contract is signed?
Correct.
And then, do you really think that's an achievable goal?
Well, it, it better be, because they got a 100, a 250 dollar a day liquidated damages.
Okay.
So we did, we put a liquidated damage charge into that contract, so.
When do you find out from Eversource? I know in here it says you won't know for a few weeks to a few months, but are they giving you their best estimate if you're getting a refund? Or is that a commitment once the project's done? Are they coming to review?
Typically, typically, they want to see hard numbers. So we had to go out to bid for them to be able to give us that firm commitment. We've got the firm commitment, now they can go back and finalize their paperwork. That's what we're waiting for. So it was, they were way for us, we were way for them.
But once they give you the paperwork, what's that telling you? We probably will, once we do our?
Yeah, they will do that, we will do that, but they won't give it to us till the end of the project.
Okay. Someone to get the money back.
I just have a quick question. So the other companies are saying they could do this within a year to year and a half, this company's saying 180 days. What are they going to do that made you guys so comfortable to vote for that, to, you know, to take that, to be comfortable with that number? Because we don't want, obviously, sure you looked at it, you don't want shoddy work.
Exactly.
Doing it so quickly to avoid the liquidated damages.
Contractors, contractors who are putting together tight budgets need to get in and get out, okay? Being in the business, we know the best thing you can have is a contractor who's motivated to get in and get out. You have someone who's going to be in here for a year, they're going to put a guy on, maybe two guys on, and you're not going to get the kind of workmanship that you want. If, you think he's going to get better workmanship, but you're not. Because you want to get the windows in, they're all going to come in, all these windows are going to come in at the same time. They're going to come in here and knock one out, every couple hours, they're going to take a window out, replace it, get it done, and get it, move on. Because that's the way they can make money. So for them, you know, it's about time and money, labor is money.
So they have more folks in their crew?
They've got.
Or smaller amount of them?
Yes, exactly.
All right. As long as you guys are comfortable with that.
We've, we've checked, you know, both Don Smith and myself, and Steve Whitaker, all checked references, so.
Obviously, they came back with good references.
Good. They're actually working up at Regions 14 right now, under the Nanowalk High School contract, but they're just starting.
I just have kind of a more general question. What is it about contracting all of the work to one supplier that makes it preferable?
You'll get, you'll get some savings, because you're going to only have, in the whole process, you'll have one manager on the job, one supervisor going around. We, we originally debated having multiple bid contracts. We, first off, the project grew and grew and got more complicated. And once we saw we missed a window last summer for the windows, because that was the key. Getting the, we were trying to get the windows in before fall, we said, let's just take this now and change it to a one contract so we can save money. And that's why we did, and then we ended up adding more stuff on that we felt that were, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it right. Because we don't want to be back here in three years and be, you know, the subject of the town saying, why did you fix the town buildings, and then we got to replace a boiler, we got to replace this. You know, things like upstairs in the attic of this building, there's no insulation. So we added that into the.
Can't believe that.
Right. We added it into the package, you know, because it's, it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
So everything that we did essentially is saving the town money from an energy standpoint. That's why the rebate is so high, the potential. So we're very comfortable, we were more comfortable having one contractor than chase three contractors around this project.
Good? Uh, yeah, yeah, thanks. Karen, anything you want?
I'm, no, I'm, I'm trying. I, I can't believe there's no insulation in this building.
In the attic, yeah, in the attic.
In the attic.
Well, strong wind comes right through my window.
I have one more question, Kurt.
Go ahead, Trish.
Excuse my ignorance on the whole topic, but not discussing Eversource, but knowing you're not going to have an answer till the end of the project, at what point do you guys decide if you're going to include the add alternates?
Good question. The add alternates, the major one is the screens. We're, we're, we had a lot of discussion on that, because there are some of us who said, it's not worth the money, okay? Because it's going to add about 20 grand. First off, who's going to take them down and wash the windows, okay? They're only going to be in half the windows, because the way these windows work, they auger in or raise up. So you don't need the upper half, they're only going to be half in. So they're going to look funny, okay? And we just felt that you're not going to, during, when windows are open, most of the time, the bugs aren't flying during the day, they're flying at night and coming to the light. So we just felt for 20 grand, there's too many things there. We can always buy them later, if we want to add those, and that's why we decided not to do that. And there was one other one that we looked at, what was?
Fire safety glass at the library?
Oh.
Is that the replacement of the one?
The fire safety glass was a big discussion item, the library board wanted. Just to give you an idea of what that is, does everybody know the old, the original entrance to the library?
Yeah.
Which is the now egress stair to the side, lower end where the entrance is. Okay, so you have two side lights, glass, and two full vision panel doors, okay, they have safety glass. Fire rated glass is 250 dollars square feet. And you got to change the door frames, the meat. We've been arguing that for probably six months as a committee. There's, the board wants it, we're just trying to say it's not worth it. Because you get a vision panel, you don't have it here, but there's a vision panel that's going to be in each door. That's going to be three inches by about 16 inches, okay? So you're going to be able to see through there, so you don't hurt anybody as you open the door. They wanted a, the vision, the full glass panels, because they want to see if there's someone, the kids are down there fooling around, making out, whatever it is, you know, starting fire, I don't know, okay, in that hallway area. We said, put a camera in there, okay? And that's been some of the discussion with who's got control of the cameras and things like that. Then we said the, the other night, let's put a buzzer system in. So if you hear someone going there, you hear the buzzer go off at the front desk, you go and check it out, okay? Is it worth 30,000 dollars? No. That's what we said. I agree, no.
Right, and it's not going to be an area of refuge, so.
Correct, correct.
And they can lock that door if they want.
Right, well, no, they can't lock it.
They can't.
Can't lock it, because it's, so, we don't, we don't fully agree to it. I think the board and Suzanne is starting to come around to understanding it's not worth it, because you can still see if you really had to. But we put it there as an add alternate, just to show them what it costs. Mainly because one of our board members felt he can do it for 5,000 dollars. Okay, so we said, okay, we're not in agreement here, let's put it as an add alternate, we can always decide later on. So the committee right now is not approving that.
Okay. We're for good reasons. So if we approve this, we're not?
You're approving the 1.65, 6, 1.605 million, I think his number is.
But you have the right to change your mind on the add alternates within that number?
We can add them on afterwards. We probably will not add the safety, the safety glass. We are debating the screens, we don't feel it's worth it. And we have the right to take the deduct alternate for the lighting if we had to. So by some chance, Eversource or state says timeout, we've got a 200 million dollar deficit, we're not funding that again. We can pull that down, get back into budget. That's why we left it as a deduct alternate. Because that can always be done later on, even on the contract.
Well, I also think, not that I'm on the committee, but screens get damaged relatively easily, so what's the point? I don't see that lasting very long.
Right, and, and if you look out into the wells over there, there's two or three screens in the wells.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my feedback, thank you.
Al?
Mike, I just want to applaud you with the comments, and you and your, your team for keeping the costs low on this and not going for all these add-ons. Our, our town can't afford this stuff anymore, these extravagant expenses. And I'm glad you're being frugal, yet not being so frugal that it's going to be issues with the project. But it sounds like you guys really watch the money, you're not adding on everything that they're trying to sell you. You've got to remember their salesmen, I'm sure you know that, and, and our town just can't afford it.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the comment, thank you. I think we have a good committee, and, you know, having Don there, you know, as the intermediary helps a lot from our perspective. And it's going to be, it'll be a nice project, because you're going to see a lot of this energy savings down the road.
Great, and I know these projects are a lot of work, and I'm glad you guys really watch, watch the money.
It's nice to see the infrastructure address.
That's responsible. Any other questions?
Everybody's good? Excellent, thank you, Mike, we appreciate it. All right. Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen, based on the letter sent from the Standing Building Committee, approve the bid and contract with Nozzle Builders Incorporated of Cheshire, Connecticut, and their low bid of 1,605,000, also including in the motion, and Rich, correct me if I go wrong, the ability of the committee to either add or deduct items as so noted. Motion by Al, second by Trish, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes 6-0. So Rory, if you want to work with Mike, reach out to them tomorrow. We'll get the contract stuff going with Rich, and we'll get it signed as soon as possible. Thank you, Mike, we appreciate it. Go ahead. All right, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding tax incentive application for Thule. In your packets, you have the initial application from Thule in the absence of an Economic Development Director. Rory and I went up and met with Patrick Monahan, who's the Chief Operations Officer for Thule, to talk a little bit about this project, and let me tell you where, I'll give you a little bit of background. Thule has a 1.5 roughly million dollar piece of equipment that will be coming in in the fall. Thule does not have the space in their current facility to house this piece of equipment, so they started looking at their other locations in Beacon Falls and in Milford to do that. Now, when they started to look a little bit in Milford, they started looking at some larger space. This piece of equipment needs 40,000 square feet by itself. Larry Janeski got wind of the need that Thule had. Larry has two lots that back directly up to Thule's property. So Larry reached out to me and asked if we could move along a project as quick as possible where Larry could build an 80,000 square foot building that will specifically house this piece of equipment. And the reason he's building an 80,000 square foot building is if you look at page three of the information that Thule sent over, their plan is to purchase a second piece of equipment for 1.5 million within a year or two. So by Larry building an 80,000 square foot building, they'll be able to house both pieces of equipment. So, you know, this is two of our larger taxpayers and two of our larger employers coming together to work to keep, you know, jobs in Seymour. This is going to add several jobs. Now, one of the things we asked Pat to do was, he has a whole presentation prepared, so I asked him to include the presentation for your review and for your understanding. Now, as is always with the tax incentive plan, all you're going to do tonight is essentially accept the application, and then everything is appended on all of the information being provided after the work is completed. And at that point, the Board of Selectmen would determine what tax incentive, if any, would be given to, to the companies. Now, keep in mind, if you look at this, the estimated value of improvements, the total project on the Thule side, between both pieces of equipment and the infrastructure improvements they need to do to the facility, as well as changes they're going to make to their current facility, is 5.7 million. That doesn't include the cost of the building that Larry is going to be, or excuse me, Basement Systems is going to be putting up for Thule. The cost of that is going to be somewhere between four or five million. So in combination, the total project is going to be in the neighborhood of nine to 10 million dollars. This piece of equipment is coming in in the fall of 2018. So Larry, assuming they, they reach the agreement, Larry Janeski is committed to having the building up by then. And working, having worked with Larry now for six years, if he says he's going to have the building up by the fall, the building will be up by, by the fall, to Larry's incredibly high standards. So we've already had some tentative meetings with, with the engineering folks for Basement Systems. It's the same engineering folks that have done all of Larry's buildings. They met with Jim Baldwin, and Jim was very pleased with the information that they came prepared with. Jim had a few questions, some additional information that he needed, we had the information back the next day. So they are on top of this and moving forward. So again, this is to, for this board, this is to introduce this tax incentive plan to, we'll make a motion, obviously, to accept the application. But that's all we will be doing at this point. Pat, both Thule and Basement Systems have used our tax incentive program in the past, so they're fully aware of how it works. That the information they provide now is the preliminary information to give us an understanding of what they're doing, and then they need to come back and justify all of the expenses. If anyone needs any additional information than what was provided, please let me know. Patrick has offered to come if the board wants and do a little presentation on the project, if you'd like. It's, Rory and I went to see it, it's, you know, it's interesting. But that's up to the, well, up to you guys. If you want to see it, I'll ask Pat to come, and he has no problem doing that. But again, he understands that this is just the initial phase of this process. So with that, I'll open it up to, to questions.
Is this about a 10 million dollar project total you said, Kurt?
In between the two, it's about 10 million, yeah, give or take, nine to 10 million.
Do we know how many jobs it's going to add?
Um, Rory, what did he say, about 20? Well, it's going to change the type of job that they're going to have. So they're going to have less seasonal employees, and they're going to have more full-time employees. So they're going to be taking, you know, 10 or 15 dollar an hour seasonal type jobs and converting those into, you know, 20, 22, 23 dollar full-time jobs.
With benefits and stuff like that. I think that it's a win-win situation for.
It's a win-win.
Yeah. You know, the, the nice thing is, you know, you see someone like Larry Janeski that is fighting to keep investment in Seymour. No, no, listen, don't get me wrong, Larry's going to make money on this, he's going to build this building, he's going to lease it out to Thule. I'm sure there'll be profit for him in it, but he could have very easily just sat back, left the land empty. But, you know, he was.
He can pay for his TV ads.
Yeah. He could definitely do that, so.
He's helping out a fellow.
Exactly.
But, you know, the other thing to keep in mind on that third page too, you know, they have the cost of the laser cutters, they have the additional investment that they need to make in the new facility, because Larry's going to. Larry's going to provide them essentially a vanilla box. I mean, it's not going to be a vanilla box because Larry doesn't do anything not full steam. But if you look to the Seymour facility, that is the reinvestment they're going to make in their current facility. So again, you can see there's several hundred thousand dollars of reinvestment that they're going to make in their current factory. The tour that we had, Rory and I, after we saw the presentation, we took a tour around the plant with Pat. They're essentially going to make their overall operations substantially more efficient, which is going to allow them to bring more goods and services through. As they become more efficient, there's the potential that they hire more people. So, you know, and more equipment. So. So that's where this is. So again, I wanted to introduce it to the board, give you guys the opportunity to ask any questions, anything that you have. And then I will report this back down to EDC at their next meeting in May. So. Anything?
That's wonderful.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen accept the tax incentive program application from Tully Incorporated for their project. We'll just label it their new laser cutter project. Keep it simple. Motion by Karen, second by Al. Any discussion? Everybody's comfortable? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. All right. Item number, actually, I'm going to make a motion to add to the agenda, discussion and possible action regarding setting of date for annual town budget meeting and refer, and budget referendum dates. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion, a possible action regarding setting date for annual town budget meeting and referendum. Okay. In the charter, the annual town meeting shall be held not later than May 1st for the following purposes, to consider and recommend the changes to the budget, revenue, debt, service, and so on and so forth. So the Board of Finance has set the annual town hearing for the 10th of April. We now need to set the annual town meeting and the referendums that will follow. So what I'd like to do is set the annual town meeting, I'm just going to go through the dates, for Thursday, April 26th at 6:00 PM. And we're actually going to hold it here. And then we will have referendum dates. We will set three, just in case. We'll set the first one on May 10th, the second one on May 24th, and the third one on June 7th. So those are Thursdays essentially every two weeks. June 7th.
Seven.
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 Yep. So May 10th, May 24th, and June 7th are the budget votes, the referendums. And then the annual town meeting will be the 26th at 6:00 PM here. Does anybody have any issue with that? Any concern? Again, we're just following the charter process. Hopefully, we will not need more than one referendum vote. But we'll set up three just in case, so that way we don't have to worry about coming back. Okay? All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. What, should we do them in two separate motions? Town meeting is one, and then the referendum is the second? Okay. All right. So the first motion, then, is to set the annual town budget meeting for Thursday, April 26th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Norma Drummer Room of the Seymour Town Hall. Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. Okay. And then the next motion, we'll set three referendum dates. The second, the second and the third are as if needed. On Thursday, May 10th, Thursday, May 24th, and Thursday, June 7th. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Well, obviously, referendum will take place from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM and be held at the Seymour Community Center. Okay. So, all right. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. Okay. Well, hopefully, the Board of, the Charter Revision Commission is talking about making changes to that, so. Maybe the last year we ever have this process. Okay. All right. Item number eight, appointments. We have three appointments. There was a new sheet handed out. Does everybody have the new sheet? Okay. And, you know, just to give you an update, we found another person for Economic Development Commission. So that is, that's certainly a positive. Bob is going to be a nice addition. And we found a qualified person for the Nogatuck Valley Health District Board, which is also very good. So we added those on to what had already been sent out. Oh, Rory, see? Rory and I went back and forth on that today. All right. So make that note, please, that Jen is unaffiliated. That means we have a shot to move her over to the R side.
That's right.
I like that.
Someday.
Yes, he would.
What was that, Stefan?
That's right. He has no additional comments. No additional comments. So, all right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the appointments list as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero one. And please note Mr. Bohniak's abstention. Okay. Excellent. It's nice when we get good, qualified people. Okay. Item number 10 is, or excuse me, item number nine, tax refunds and abatements. I apologize. So you have the reports. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the tax collector's report as presented. Motion by Trish, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. Item number 10 is transfers. We have no transfers before us tonight, but at our next meeting, we will have transfers as we, the Board of Finance is making some requests as to how we hold our unencumbered cash reserves. So we will have those at our next meeting for us to take action, and then the Board of Finance will take action at their meeting at the end of the month. Item number 11 is correspondence. The only correspondence we have this week incredibly is the check register. I hope you guys all have that. And move on to item number 12, public comments. Is there any additional public comment? Jamie, go ahead.
Jamie Brennan, 124 Bunge Road. Rise at this time to speak as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's my concern that the commission has been practicing subdivision, open space waivers in conflict with their regulations. So I plan to initiate discussion of looking at the, their regulations at the upcoming meeting. I spoke briefly with zoning enforcement on this. He also thought that we needed to revisit these regulations as there's aspects in town that I wasn't aware of. He said that aren't involved with the current regulations. So we'll be needing legal advice on that. Right now, they've set precedence, you know, for open space waiver giveaways that are in conflict with what their regulations are. I've seen that both as a private citizen taxpayer and now as a member of the board. I voted no, and I was the only one who voted no. But we'll need to pursue that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Okay. Hearing no public comments. We'll move on to Selectmen's public comments. Governor Bohniak.
With your new title.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just a couple things tonight. First of all, I want to say I finally had an opportunity to attend a Rise Up Day ceremony, and I thoroughly enjoyed myself. It was a great production, as everyone has said many times. I was happy to finally be there. Another thing, a not-so-positive note, I would like to urge members of the Economic Development Commission, the aforementioned, to take their responsibility seriously and start showing up to meetings. We have had to cancel three or four of the last five, which to me is unacceptable.
Cancelled tonight?
You cannot.
But.
Just nod your head up and down.
Sure.
Okay. Especially at a time where we could use the services of the Economic Development Commission more than ever. Absenteeism on that commission is unacceptable. And I would like to urge anyone who cannot make meetings to please step down so we can find somebody who will. And then.
Do you know how many you had tonight?
Two. With one excused out of six. Total.
So. Thank you very much.
All right. And then the final thing is I would like to ask you, Mr. First Selectman, if we could start hearing from some department heads again. I always enjoy hearing their presentations. Tonight was great to hear from Mike, but that's a little different situation. So if you can get somebody in for our next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Rory's been working on lining people up. I know Tony Di Primo wanted to go again. So is there anyone in particular?
No. I like, I like hearing from all.
Just a mix?
Anybody you can get would be fine with me.
I know the Safety Committee wanted to come back. Public Works, we'll reach out, we'll get someone at the next, next meeting. We're trying to get them. It's just, you know, sometimes.
Yeah. I think Public Works soon would be, would be timely, you know, as a kind of winter wrap-up.
Is everybody good with Public Works going next?
Sure.
You sure?
I mean, he's the one who usually shows up. We don't usually hear from anybody else, but I'd love to hear from Tony again.
Well, I'd try to go with the big departments. I mean, I can have the chief come in to do a swan song if you want on the police department.
I would love that. I would love that, actually, before he takes, before he.
All right. Rory, can you line up Tony Di Primo and the chief?
I'd like to hear somebody other than.
Tell them I requested him personally. Okay, I'm going.
So, and then we'll line up the Safety Committee. So let's get those for our next three meetings.
Let's not get, let's not get the usual suspects.
Aging?
Aging.
Aging committee.
Aging.
Committee?
Yeah. Department.
There is no aging department. Well, that would be Mary.
Okay. Well, okay, never mind.
I'm all set. Thank you.
No, no, you're fine. That's fine. All right. So we'll knock up, that's, yeah, good point. So we'll get, I'm just battling at this point. So Rory, we'll line up those three? Yes? Okay. Rory, give the thumbs up, so that means you're good, Governor. You're very welcome. Mrs. Stanek? If you'd like, or you can pass.
No.
All right.
I have something I'd love to say. We went to the FOI meeting last week. I was very disappointed that there were not more people there. There were 17 of us in the audience. I counted three times, 17. Tom Henneck was a fabulous speaker. He gave us a lot of information about FOI. And I really feel that the information that he gave us is something that all of us would really benefit from.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, I agree. And I think it was great that we were able to get Tom to come down because he is, I would argue, he is the expert in Connecticut on FOI.
I want to thank the Board of Education for doing that.
Yeah. Yeah. It was Jen that pushed that, which was good. So, very good thing. We're fortunate to have Rich. He keeps us out of trouble for the most part.
Yeah.
Al?
Just want to make a quick comment about Rise Up. Just after Stefan's comments. Ernie Di Stacey and his staff did an excellent job. It was fun to take part in it this year. Kind of a fun thing to do. My daughter, she helped us choreograph the little dancing we did and our little routine that was, was, need to be a part of it. She warned me that people go absolutely crazy for this thing. And we had 800 screaming people in that auditorium, and it was just a great time. Ernie gets them all riled up and, and the staff puts on a great show. Some of the staff members can really, really do a nice job. They put a lot into it. It's great dance routines. It's fun to watch. And everybody has fun, and it goes to a great cause. So I'll definitely go again next year. That'd be fun. And they're doing a holiday one, which I believe is close to being, well, it's on its way to being sold out too, they announced the holiday Rise Up. So I believe it's in, in November. But look at your tickets for that, because they're going to go fast. The other thing I'd like to mention, as Karen mentioned at last meeting, about the trees on Holbrook Road, there are some trees that do need to come down in Holbrook. I know that Tony Di Primo, he and his staff were targeting some of those trees on Holbrook Road. Really dangerous. Some of them are dead. Some of those branches, they're out there, they're doing their thing. But that's definitely a road we need to look into because a tree's going to come across that road at some point. There's just, there are just so many. But that's really it.
And just to address that, the Holbrook Road is almost at the end of third-party review. Once it comes back from third-party review, the engineer just has to button up a few things. It goes up to the State of Connecticut for final approval. Their expectation is that that will be out to bid in late May, early June, which will have work start at some point late summer, early fall. That's a two-year project, very similar to Remen Road, which will be starting back up in the next, I'd say, two or three weeks. But a lot of the trees will be addressed as a part of that, that project, because they're going to try to take out some of those.
That's what people asking me about.
Dangerous curves.
Thank you, Al. Thank you.
Yeah. We get emails on Holbrook a lot, to be honest.
Some relatives are in my ear about it, too.
Yeah. I can imagine which ones. So, so that'll be addressed.
Thank you.
Right. It's a dangerous road.
You're welcome. So, thank you, Al. Anne Marie?
Just to comment on Rise Up, it was, it was a great event. It was fun to watch. I can't wait to see what November is going to hold, as well as next year. Ernie does a tremendous job with that. I agree with Stefan on the meetings. There has been times, many times, where you'd show up to a meeting, I would show up to a meeting just to see what's going on, and there would be no meeting because they wouldn't have a quorum. I think the people need to start seriously taking into effect whether you're an elected physician or you're an appointed physician, you need to be at these meetings. It's not a, well, I'll go if I want to go. I understand it's volunteer. We volunteer. I get it. But you make a commitment to be on a committee. You need to be there for those meetings.
Oh, I agree with you 100%. And the new person that'll be joining, Bob Finley, is very eager, specifically asked to be on the committee. He's been on the charter, or he's on the Charter Revision Commission. He's done some other committees. So Bob is, I'm comfortable that Bob and the two members, if I had to guess who they were, that were there. I think those three will make a nice
So I know it's in, I know it's in some things that if you miss an X amount of number of meetings...
If it's three meetings in a row and the chairman has to send a letter to us and then we can remove people from that board.
I think that needs to start being looked at. And, you know, we, we hear...
But at the same time, we need to have bodies. So, I mean, if people are aware of people that want to be on Economic Development, please bring their names forward. And we can certainly do that. Mr. Stefan and I talk all the time about people going on boards and things like that. So if you know of bodies, no, he's on enough boards. We gotta give the board kid a break. You know, if, if you know of people, let me know because it'd be great to have, again, people that are interested, that want to be there, that want to be involved. You know, I don't necessarily care about party. I just want people that are gonna show up and, and do the job.
And be, and be a productive part, not just be a body, but be a productive part to a committee, absolutely. Right. And also, to Stefan's point about having somebody come in here, you know, other departments come in here. Tony comes in a lot, you know, we have the rec department come in here. I would like to hear as well from the commission of aging, as well as our other departments, the police department, the fire department. Not just the same people coming in here, in here and the same thing over. I mean, Tony, Tony's been very busy. Public Works has been very busy this past two quarters, between the storms and everything. So I, I'd like to hear from other departments as well.
Okay.
You know, fire marshal, inland, wetlands, planning and zoning, those people as well.
Well, I think once we have the new structure up, we can have Jim Baldwin come in and give an update on how it's going. I mean, we're in the process now of interviewing for the clerk position where he's actually been setting up the interviews for that. So maybe we can schedule him for late May, maybe, just to give an update. That's, so Rory, let's just line up a bunch of, would you guys like to see every, someone at every meeting? I mean, unless we have an exceptionally long agenda. Okay. Is that good for everybody? Trish?
Also, and there is a Public Works meeting next Monday, in case anybody's interested in going. There's one next Monday at Public Works.
Excellent.
Something like that.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Trish?
Just thank you to the Building Committee. I'm glad to hear that you think highly of the people on your committee and working all together. And that's all I have.
Okay. Rory, anything we missed? Rich, anything you'd like to add? Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, holy cow.
She'll learn.
That's never happened before.
I know.
Wow, motion by Trish, second by Karen. The world just shifted a little bit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye. Motion passes six zero. Mark the meeting closed at 7:56 PM. Mr. Bowen, front and center.